Our dedication to Mr. Henner and our pledge, Mr. Wallace. Stand, please.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great efforts towards us. We ask you to lead the elected officials of the cities that go out and run businesses in your lead, guidance, and all figuring for your sake and for the people's sake. These things we ask in Jesus' presence.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our council tonight, Mr. Patrick, who is not here, and neither is Mr. Miller, but we do have... Our first item on our agenda is a recognition of Mike Cobb, who has retired. Mr. Weller?
Yes. This is the first year in about thirty years that we've completed a baseball season in Scottsboro without Mike Cobb being there. For twenty of those thirty years, he served as athletic director and someone who got to make schedules and help with the droughts for basketball and soccer and baseball, and he heard all the complaints about whatever they might be about the fields. He worked it out in all kinds of weather. He's been a loyal and dedicated employee for all these years, and just in the last few years, we've started to recognize those employees who retire by just giving them a small token of our appreciation and the flag. Mike's here tonight, and the flag raised in recognition and appreciation for over twenty-nine and a half years of service with the Scottsboro Parks and Recreation Department and the city of Scottsboro, Alabama. And his retirement date was April 30th, 2016. How many directors did you work under before? Starting with Woodson?
Woodson, then.
Woodson, Johnny Farmer, Ricky Nance, and then you were all. All right, so Keith, if you'll help me move on. Congratulations. Mike, we wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, my counsel.
Anything else, say?
I was just kidding. You don't have to.
There is one thing, like I say, I would like to thank Mayor Potter, and I would like to thank the City Council of Scottsboro for recognizing me. I've been blessed to work for the city for thirty years, and I've met a lot of lifelong friends working for the city, and everybody in every department for the city has been good to me in every way, helped me in every way that I've asked for. And also, I'd like to thank all the volunteer coaches, men and women, and parents that have helped me while I was athletic, everything in the program. And I do believe we live in one of the best small towns in the nation, so thank you very much for everything.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our second item on the agenda is Unclaimed Baggage Center, John Porter, regarding a recent alcohol licensing that we have approved on account.
Mr. Elkins will speak, if that's okay.
That will be fine.
Chief Mayor and City Councilman, I appreciate your time tonight. I came back, I was here a few months back or so, and tonight I'm going to come back again. My name's Mike Elkins, and I'm the president of Unclaimed Baggage Center. That night I came and spoke, and I'm also the chairman of the board of the Jackson County Chamber of Commerce, but as I stated that night and again tonight, I'm just here representing Unclaimed Baggage Center. Since I've been here and been a part of Unclaimed Baggage Center for three years, we've been talking often about how do we improve our first impressions. A lot of things we've talked about at Unclaimed Baggage Center is we call it the drive home, and that's when you get in your car and you leave any business or leave any event. That should be the time that you're most happy or you're most unhappy when you make your decision to return or not. Part of that goes in the first and last impressions, and I'm very much want to see that our city put our best foot forward on Willess Street. So I come tonight stating that then we are a business that are pro-business. We're not here tonight, I'm not asking tonight to reverse any decisions, as I stated that night. What I'm here to say is tonight that we have over eight hundred thousand to a million people that come to our business each year. And if you go out of town and you're on vacation and you're meeting with someone and you say so, where are you from? And you answer Scottsboro. They may, one or two things will happen, and then about a minute, we're Unclaimed Baggage Center, or is that where that Unclaimed Baggage Center is located at? We start up a conversation. So if all our businesses really succeed, we send tremendous amount of business to our restaurants in town in trying to ensure that we're doing the best that we can. So I just want to see us put our best foot forward, and whatever that is in your eyes is the big determinant. But as a citizen, I just want to speak that. So kind of what happened was is, as I stated that day, I was in Gardendale for a desk appointment. I come out of the desk appointment about 3:30, and my HR calls me and says, hey, someone's come by and said, do you oppose or are you in favor for Lucky Looking Emporium to be blown on the corner? And I said, well, I'm not opposed at all for the business. I think the business will be fine. I'm opposed to the location because I'm not sure that's what we want to keep putting in front of everybody down this street. So yeah, I would like to oppose. Well, you have to be present at the six o'clock meeting. So I'm out, and forty-five minutes later, I know tickets and make, the troopers leave me alone, and I make it up here, and I attend a meeting and present that night and finish my presentation, and the honor here is here and did his part, and when I finished up, I walked over and shook his hand and wished him luck, and that hasn't changed. However, I felt like if you're going to ask the business if you want to oppose tonight, what does it matter if three hours later you didn't make a vote? And that's kind of what bothered me the most. So what I'm coming to you tonight is, there's two things that came out of the ordinance under section six. The first one reads, it says, "In rendering a decision on each application for a license under this chapter, the city and council may consider, among others, the following factors." The first one I want to state is A. It just says, "The effects upon residents, real property and owners and businesses within three hundred feet of the locations of which license is sought." So I think that's great. What I don't think is good is to have such limited time to make a decision or talk to other business owners or other property owners and see if they feel the same way or not. I'm not saying anything will change, but it just kind of felt like it was stamped and moved through so quickly that really I don't know why I had a chance to even oppose it or not. And then lastly, under F, it says, "Any other information, need by the City Council to be relevant to the public health, safety, or welfare of the city of Scottsboro." And I think Willess Street is the welfare of the city of Scottsboro. I think it is our first impression, and I think there's considerations of what things will look like as we move forward, and what is it? I don't, I mean, I have a vision, but it's something that I just want to be the best foot forward. So tonight, I'm just bringing forward to you that I don't believe those two, that first one, A, was followed, I think, the process is to apply, and then it's supposed to go into the agenda, then be posted for seven days, and then the next meeting is to be voted on. This went Friday to Monday to Monday night and vote. And I just would like to note that if that is the best way to do it, and seven days I think is adequate. I'm not asking for changes, just asking maybe to ensure that we adhere to it, and if we do have an oppose or a favor, that we just get a chance to talk to you about it. And that's all I'm coming to you now as a citizen and a business owner that would have liked that opportunity to have a little bit more time. That's my thoughts. Tonight, I thank you for listening and considering.
Mr. Wallace, can I have anything?
The only thing that I would add that since this has been brought up, we have changed this a little bit in the way we do things in a set of dates. Now, this is going to be here until you're here in just a few minutes, just doing this exact thing. Another thing is that the date and time at the background, not the background, but the neighborhood check is done, will be dated and timed and will be done in a manner of which enough time this guy can do exactly like you're talking about. And if they're not at home, a door hanger will be left notifying them of that. So you have brought up some points and some things that we will, we are addressing and having through us today, and I'm trying to enact, so I appreciate your concern.
Thank you, and that's all of us.
Mr. King?
I was just going to say what the mayor said, what Mayor COVID plans.
I'm sorry, that's what she said. Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an alcohol license. Steve Chickberry, DBA group. Is he here? Would you like to speak? We'll come over first. We have a public hearing. Now is the time and place for a public hearing for anyone who would like to speak in favor of you. And then we'll ask anyone, who may be not in favor of it. Would you like to speak?
I just want to let everybody know that I've been in business over nineteen years doing this, roughly thirty years of my life doing it. That's about it.
Where is this company?
It's on East Willow, on the other side of town, 3701, East Willow Street.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Would like to speak against it? No one being here would oppose the public hearing. Could we have any questions of this gentleman from the council?
No, I actually, Fire Marshal sent me some pictures of the inside of the building, and Stephen's done a good job of fixing the inside of it, we'll do as well with the outside.
When are you proposing having it open and completed?
I go to ABC the fourteenth after your meeting on next Monday, then I go to ABC. They can be first week to second week in July, I figure. So I'll take that.
Well, we'll put this on the agenda, if that's okay with everyone for next Monday and night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four item is Keller, Keller Logging Contract. How are you known?
Well, they're here, I think a few weeks ago, they came and presented that contract, I believe, to you all, wasn't here that night. Patrick had asked from, to be put on the agenda tonight, I guess in case you have any questions, or maybe you all could look at the contract and make a decision of whether to allow them to do this cutting down on the island. I think it's weather-related, since we're running into some dry weather now, it's a good time for them to do it. So they're here if you have any questions.
Hey, do you all have any questions?
I haven't had an opportunity to look at the contract. I think when they were here before, we talked about perhaps some of us going out and looking at the property. One of the questions I had, I know that we've got opinions from Keller Logging, have we talked to anybody from the Department of Forestry or anybody like that as to what their recommendations would be?
No, we have. They approached us about this contract, so no. I don't know if they've been in touch with.
Is this something that we're looking to put on next week's agenda?
In the period that it will be in this rehab.
As I look at the overhead photographs, you know, I'd almost like to go out and take a look around the property of the area that has been cut. And how long ago was it cut?
Roughly five years.
Five years ago? Just for my own curiosity, I'd like to get a look at the area that has been cut before, and I'd also like an opinion of our forestry agent for the county also. Can we make arrangements to do that in the next, in the next week or so?
We're completely fine with that, and I think it'd be a good idea to look at how the forestry commissioner stand for it. They're very committed in their work. They do professional inspections for environmental, policy, and we welcome the opportunity.
And not that I'm questioning your opinion of the project.
Absolutely. If you can get that done this coming week, will you have an opportunity to look at this?
I'll make arrangements. Don't make a doubt about the contact information.
Under the proposed contract, you will be following the guidelines issued in Alabama's Forestry Commission and its publication of recommended investment management practices, which is what you also did on the contract five weeks ago.
That's correct. If, why don't we go ahead and put it on next Monday night's agenda, and if we can't get that accomplished, we'll adopt for that minute, but if not, we'll let it be. So if you get that accomplished, will you give the city's rate in there or not? Just a clarification, you proposing that I meet with Alabama Forestry Commissioner to share, you know, our management proposal?
Then, and I'd like to meet with him also and get his, get his input. But I'd also like to put feet on the ground out there and take a look at the areas that have already been cut compared to what's there now that we're going to look at.
Yes, sir. Anyone else have any? Thank you. Item number five is to discuss our capital project, the Police Department, Fire Department, Street Sanitation and Recreation Department. Who's going to speak first?
I don't have anything. I think this was mixed for itself, it was presented several weeks ago. Mr. Wallace, I think had some questions, and one of them answered, and it was put off until a work session, and we got to discuss it, so here we are.
Chief Dogg, did I understand that with the acquisition of these vehicles will surplus some older, some older police cars?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll surplus those and put that money back into the general fund?
It usually goes back to the capital outlay, to the police department.
Okay, all right. That's all I have on the police department, but gee, I had a couple of questions. Thank you, by the way, for sending me those photographs and the things that you did. The only issue that I really had, you've already taken out your fourteen three, that's that matching, matching funds for the grant that you had. I've talked to some other departments that have these UTD vehicles. Can you tell us what the need that we have for that is?
I will do my best. The need is, from our perspective, mostly twofold. We have a lot of rural areas. We've got this new brush truck, but there's a lot of places you can't get these big trucks into the woods, into the mountain fires, and those sort of things. So it's got the capability, we'll have the capability to buy those mountain woods fires that are where a truck can get to, and it can get there easier. The second side of that is it also has the capability to, you know, hikers, patients, law clerks, whatever, remove them from those kind of places as opposed to the way they do it now, which is, I wish this guy was trying to invest in that drop, but.
Again, I've talked to some departments that have this type of equipment, and they've all said that, you know, we're more than welcome to use those in those situations, but most of them say that those vehicles don't get enough use to stay well-maintained.
Some tire departments or some steel departments.
No, some county and other, you know, you've got, you've got at your disposal, right, rescue squad, I know that they're not equipped for firefighting, but for personnel group in an emergency, I know the EMA has a vehicle at the disposal of anybody in the county as well as rescue squad and things like that. So I'm just wondering what our need is for that, and do we have enough need to justify the capital outlay, or is it going to be something that sits there and will ride as parade?
I don't, not planning on any parades, but to maybe kind of look at your question, I guess, our call volume, our regular maintenance schedule is somewhat different than the other departments that you speak of. So we've got people there all the time, and as far as maintenance, I think that's not, that won't be an issue as far as the call volume is substantially more. I know the rescue squad and the EMA both have those things, but the dispatch time for them tends to be longer than what's acceptable for us a lot of times.
I guess I keep trying to get around to finding a, finding a need there, but have we had an instance in the last five to ten years where this not having this piece of equipment would have caused a catastrophic event for it?
I wouldn't go as far as say catastrophic. We've certainly had incidents where it would have made the work we do easier and more efficient.
Okay, that's all of it. Thank you.
Uh...
Before you, let me ask one more question, Gene. I saw that when we took out the fourteen three for the Mack on the brush truck, I've got two different sets of proposals here, that we upped another area where we, did we not have a dump in the sirens warning system?
No, this, these were, I've got that quote in since that first work session. It's my, part of the reason we changed this. That additional funds on the sirens were for things that some of the sirens aren't one hundred percent operational, and for each of those stacks on there, they've been working parts, if you look at those sirens. So some of them may be at eighty-five, seventy-five percent operation. That money would replace all those parts based on the quote from the sirens technician and bring them all to one hundred percent.
But I think that you're telling us too, that going forward, it's going to be included in the budget. It kind of caught us off guard this time, and that's why the capital outlay, and then next year's going to be just rolled over into your budget.
I'm willing, I will, we're more happy to put that in our budget if it's there to maintain these things on a regular basis, more regular basis.
I believe, if I remember correctly, I may have brought that to someone's attention in the city, because I, my wife works in Winston, and they were checking their sirens every couple of weeks, they check to make sure they work properly, and we weren't checking ours at all, and we checked them, and it didn't work. A lot of them didn't work.
Well, we discussed this a little bit the other day, but the EMA office maintains the ability to test those, to set those off as any big. And we talked about maybe moving that around and giving us that ability, but thinking about it, you know, they have somebody assigned to that, they have communication with the Weather Service, they have that technology there, you know, whereas can we commit somebody that's always going to be there to do that? So them maintaining that is okay. As far as a regular test, they do, from my understanding, a monthly test and then a periodic silent test, which doesn't necessarily blast, but send a signal to the sirens and a signal back to the tester.
When did they start that?
I would have to check within my.
Because I understand that in the city, and if anything in the city works, those things should work.
I agree with you.
And not in eighty-five percent, that's what I'm saying. You know, what I would personally like to do is see that removed, and you guys have a clue with it, and maybe Josh or someone like that have a budget item that he could get it taken care of every how often we need to do that and check them.
Like I said, I'm willing for us to do that, maybe somebody else do this by, once we become aware that some of them aren't operating, that's when we go on and go on working again, this extra.
Well, you're not discussing, you were telling me that you got enough to, some of them send it back, and some of them they die. But when it comes to tornadoes, we really need a hundred percent.
I agree with your understanding, that's why we added that money as soon as I quote.
Uh... Mr. Duke, yeah? Anything? The only thing I have a problem with is, we went up and down the ladder about the police plant, and I, I guess I don't understand how the county's paid for the police plant instead of the police plant having to pay for three, and one, we pay for three, and I say that to say that there's all kinds of things that come along, but that money that they do have could be used for as, as the year goes on, and we need vehicles. So are we at four or are we at three in this budget right now?
The way that the chief and I discussed it, when it originally came about, we told him we had the money in this capital project, so extra money to buy three, and if he wanted four, he could use his fund, which he used before. It's solely his decision. I mean, if he gets three, then we're paying a hundred percent. If he gets four, then he's paying one. If the money was there, then I'd say, yeah, but we only have so much of this extra capital outlay money at the present time. Now, that's not to say things are not going to change come August or September, and we can look at it again, so.
I know, but what worries me is waiting for the latter part of the year to do that.
Yeah, but I...
And we've argued over and over about we buy a lot of this other stuff for all these other people, and not find for our own people. I believe our capital outlay for our own departments, I think. And I'd like to see, and I know you probably won't be here, but I'd like to see in our next budget year that all of the departments get what they need, and then whatever's left, we go out to all the other places in town. And that's the way we do it now, is bake and throw money first, and we get a basic budget, and then as the year goes on, we try to buy money for whatever else they need. I'm not too sure that's the best way we should do that, and I'm sure everybody's not agree with that, but I just say that.
Council's in charge of the finances, so you can do it if you want.
So we can do four parts, right?
If, well, the money's not there right now, but it's not to say it won't be in two months or three months, but.
We take money off the Heritage Center.
It's up to y'all.
You know how I feel about that. We won't even go there again, but we'll talk about it. Anyone have anything, Mr. Brinkley? Anything?
I thought, I did want to point out just one thing for, for information for the council. As we look at the software package for the recreation center, their existing request for $21,000, if you read the information provided with the proposal, that is an initial investment. I've spoken with Mr. Weaver, it is, in addition to that number, there is a $1,000 minimum fee per month that goes along with that. So that is over the next five years, a $60,000 minimum maintenance fee for that software package. So with initial investment plus five years of service, you're going to look at, you know, ballpark eighty thousand dollars plus travel expenses and things of that nature. So I just want us to understand that that looks like a $21,000 outlay, it is a much more significant investment for the, for the city than that.
So what we proposing? So what are we proposing doing this next Monday night, Mr. Mayor?
It's as far as I'm concerned.
I guess I'm a little concerned on three of the five of us. And I thought they had questions, but they're not here. I guess we could talk to them, but I guess that would be one-sided.
I'll probably talk to them if you want me to.
Talk to them as well?
Yes, if you want me to.
Okay.
I would say, I would suggest just do them like you did the other, put it on there and you know when you take it out.
Let's put it on the agenda. Okay, item number six is to discuss a resolution, 2016, 508, capital resolution.
I'll do that. In your package, you have a resolution, we received a transportation alternative program grant for the downtown square. If you'll look behind that cover sheet, that first sheet, you'll see the exact areas that we're talking about, is the areas that are one block off the square. This is just the agreement from the Department of Transportation, saying that we will accept the grant. The total project cost is $347,000. City's match is $69,000. And the Alda tap request would be for 278 for a total of 347. So this is just the agreement we've been awarded the grant. This is the agreement for us to take the, allow us to take the grant, and this will be done after the downtown square area is completed, and this will be one block off. It has to serve under two separate contracts because it's two separate grants.
Any questions?
Speaking of the downtown, the square project, knew that they were supposed to have a planning review session sometime in the near future, do we know when that's going to be?
We had the 90% plan review back in April. That, those plans have now been sent to Alda for their approval. They'll go through them and see what they need to change or not change, or get back with us. That could take us up to much as six months, but it could only take four months, you never know, depending on what they find. Engineers are taking care of all that. You know, that puts it in the November timeframe, and you certainly don't want to do construction until after the first of the year. So you're looking at next spring, I would say, before anything started. And that was the last word that we got, that they got simple plans out.
Okay, we'll put this on the agenda for next Monday night as well. Next item is to discuss resolutions, something in reference to the drainage project.
Yes, so this is a different grant that we are applying for, it's Community Development Block Grant. The last few years, the Water Street Gas Board has applied for this grant, and this year we're going to. You see a drawing there of the proposed grant, where it would improve the drainage off Cedar Hill Drive at the end of Ward Street there. You'll see that it goes down behind the jail, the hospital, and connecting into Roseberry Creek, and hopefully that would alleviate some of the drainage problems and flooding that we experienced along Parks Avenue, behind Dr. Holland's office, down by Heroes Drive, all the way down to those digits. So it is just a resolution allowing us to apply for this grant. The total grant is 648,000. The city's match is 198,000, but of that, 114,000 is cash and the rest is in-kind services. It's an 80-20 grant. And this is just a resolution allowing us to apply for the grant. These are very competitive, they only give out about 20 throughout the whole state. So it's just allowing us to apply for this grant.
Any questions, Mr. Wallace? Okay, we'll put this on the agenda for next Monday night. Item number eight, to announce the library board resignation.
Ms. Joyce Kennimer has resigned from the Scottsboro Library Board effective July 15, 2016. Anyone interested in serving this position should send a letter to the city clerk's office by June 24th.
Okay, so we make that a point. 27, we'll make that a point. That's the end of items on there. There's also a letter attached to our agenda in regard to Mr. Hodges, the chairman of the county commission, informing us that we're going to get 139,646 dollars.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
Would you please?
Yeah, unless you want to.
By several quarters of that.
First off, on a good note, in, as part of the process of getting the bond issue for the capital projects that was just approved, we went through another bond rating, and our credit rating is remains at an A+ which is very good news and a positive thing for the city. Going to the letter that you all have, we did receive a letter last week from Mr. Hodges, and the county commission stating that they had an attorney's general opinion that the business privilege tax that we had been receiving from the county for at least 15 years, if not longer, we will no longer receive that. And the letter that you see there, it shows the 2014 distribution, which runs a year later, so we would have gotten this money last year, and this money shouldn't have been in our budget last year. But the county commission voted last week not to give us that money. It affects not only us, but the school systems and the other municipalities in the county. And it's my understanding that the commission will vote tomorrow or at their next meeting, which I think is tomorrow, on the tax that was collected in 2015, which we would have put in this year's budget, and that amount should be close to that same $140,000 number. You know, we've heard a lot about how much their TBA, the little tax, has decreased for the county, but it's affected us also. We've seen a million and a half dollar decrease since 2011. We've adjusted our budget and we've been able to manage this decrease without the threat of any additional taxes. You'll see a chart there that through the years, our county garbage rates, what they pay for our landfill, has not increased since 2009. And it is in our contract that we are allowed to go up on that every year, according to Consumer Price Index. And we've just elected not to do that to try to help the county since 2009, but had we enacted those raises, we would be, they would be paying nine and a half percent more than what they're paying right now. And that is in there for your information. Also, the contract with the animal control shelter is in there, and also a letter concerning the fire tax allocation that has been taken out of the property taxes in the city of Scotts since 1991, and some of the problems that we've had with that through the years. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And lastly, if everything goes well, probably a week from tomorrow, they will start the demolition, AD and this crew will start the demolition of the ball field at Veterans Field, and we'll get that project underway. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions about some of this?
I have a question in regard to Mr. Kennimer. They say in this letter that they have an official attorney general's opinion.
You should have a copy of that also when you touch.
But my question is, an attorney general's opinion is basically that, an opinion, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it can be overridden by a court, correct?
Yes, sir.
Or it would be the possibility of the city, but I'm a couple of times not as I am, be worth looking into, if not actually doing.
It's already been looked into.
And?
The likelihood of revailing is remote.
That's my question, then. Do we have a? It does seem like it's a lot of money. And I'm being honest with you, it'll hurt the city of Scotts for that much money, but I can imagine, what if it went to smaller towns like Section and St. Louis and Bridgeport? Now, those people who've probably been on that money a lot more than we, because we have their back place probably than they. Doesn't seem like anyone ever discussed any of this with any of us, unless they've never talked to you.
No, not until Mr. Weaver had approached him a couple of weeks ago, asking about the payment, and then that was when I was notified that this would probably be the case, so.
We have someone who signed up to speak, Mr. Jimmy Cobble.
I don't really have anything to say, he already left. I was going to kind of rebut what Mr. Elkins was talking about. There's no real need, I know we followed, the city followed all the correct procedures to get my alcohol license. As far as cleaning Willow Street up, well, I think I did a pretty well job cleaning that building up anyways. I don't really have much to add to that, but.
And I can agree, it looked pretty bad before you.
Right.
Get over it, right? And they also had alcohol beer and stuff at that.
Right next door, and I.
I don't really think he was asking us to change anything. I think he wanted to make a point, that it kind of got rushed in to come in.
And I.
And it was a valid point.
I understand that as well. But certain applications need the seven days, and certain applications apparently didn't, according to Mr. Mayor.
I can understand why anyone would need from beginning to end seven days.
Right.
And I don't have a problem with that part. Again, I think he just wanted to make a point. He made a point. And I don't think he asked for receiving anything, I don't know that we could do that or would do that.
Right.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I'd like to thank you, I just thank you for coming.
Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Sorry if I was long-winded.
Do you have any last words?
No, neither do I. Appreciate everybody coming tonight, good luck for our work. Hope you all come back next Monday night. This is adjourned.